I call the order this meeting in the passing independent school district board of trustees in regular session on Tuesday, May the 27th, 2025, in the boardroom with the administration building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Crystal Davila, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, and me, K.C. Phelan. Paola Gonzalez is on her way, she should be here shortly. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and the notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code's Chapter 551. The invocations this evening will be given by Mr. Kendrick and the pledges by Ms. Davila. If you'll please stand.
We thank you for this day, we thank you for such a grand finish of school. They've worked hard, they've worked long and hard and put their lives into their students, and we've had a successful graduation. Not too eventful year, and one that we came out good, in fact excellent. We thank you for all the help and all the work that's been done for the professionalism and just brightness that our people have in working with these students and the love they have for them. We pray for our country, we pray for the meeting tonight, we pray that you would bless it, that we will be discernment in what we do, as all best for you and for this district and for our children. Forgive us, and I am your asking.
Takes us to the public comments according to policy BED local relates to items on the open session portion of the agenda, there are no public comments, which takes us to our budget workshop presented by Ms. Dr. Tamika Alfred Stevens, Chief Financial Officer.
So, Board, before Dr. Alfred Stevens begins, just want you to say, want you to know how hard her team has worked on this budget. We're kind of in an unknown timeframe with the state legislator of where they are, and she's going to give us some information about that. She's planning for what is, we know is current law right now, but we know that there are some things out there that just haven't been all the way approved, and we don't have all the numbers just yet, but she's going to show you what is current law, and but then we will be able to come back around hopefully sooner rather than later, and be able to give you what is updated through the state legislator. So, Tamika, take it off.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, and good evening, audience members, President Phelan, trustees. Tonight, I'd like to give you an update on where we are in the current year's budget planning process, and I'll walk us through each of the different steps that we've taken to get us to the point that we are at today. Before I begin, I'd just like to remind you again that the information that is being shared in this presentation is based on current law. I want to reiterate that several times throughout the presentation, because once I start talking about current legislation or current law in comparison to legislation that is in the pipeline, I don't want us to get confused about what is actually in law and what we have to represent as we prepare to bring a budget forward for adoption here in June. Also, I'd like to just take a moment to highlight that at our last workshop, I had an opportunity to remind us of what the priorities were for our governor this year, and also I had an opportunity to remind us of all of the different challenges we're facing as it relates to deficits, enrollment challenges, ongoing operational increases. Those are real challenges that we know that we must take into consideration and work within the funding parameters that we know to be true at this time, okay? So with that being said, I'm going to start by talking through our planning considerations that we have prepared for this 25-26 school year, and then I'll present a draft of the budget for 25-26, and then I'll give a short legislative update, and then we'll talk through what our next steps are in the budget planning process. So considerations, these four areas at the top of this presentation are our revenue generators, and when I say revenue generation, I'm speaking of how do we get our funding? What is, what is taken into consideration when we are budgeting and forecasting and planning for any school year in the current day and beyond, even with long-range planning? We're always going to be looking at what our enrollment patterns are, we're going to be looking at average daily attendance, meaning how do our students come to school and the things that we can do to increase student attendance rates. We're also looking at our property values. We always want to know what businesses are coming into the district, exiting the district, what residential communities are expanding or not expanding, all of those are different variables that we have to take into consideration. And I have here disaster pennies as well, because there is strict criteria around when a district can request to use disaster pennies, and, and for the 24-25 school year that we're currently in, we were able to get approval from our board to use disaster pennies to help us overcome some of the expenses that we incurred because of recent damages, and we also had Hurricane Burl that happened, that we won't be able to use disaster pennies hopefully, because of that particular storm as well. So each of those four areas are important revenue generation mechanisms that we used when we were considering what we could do with our funding for these, for the upcoming school year. Now, from the expenditure standpoint, of course, we're looking at our staffing needs and looking at any adjustments that need to be made as it relates to staffing, and then, of course, our operational needs, looking at how we can do business in a, in a more efficient way, so that we can generate some cost savings is always a goal operationally. Here, it's just a quick snapshot that I wanted to share with you all, so that you can see again all of the different variables that we're looking at when we're working on budgeting and planning and developing a budget. So from, you heard me mention a moment ago, property tax rates, you heard me mention enrollment, you heard me mention average daily attendance, and if you look at our maintenance and operations tax rate, you'll see that five-year history, which shows that basically our maintenance and operations tax rate has decreased, I'm sorry, let me go back, decreased over several years, primarily because of property tax relief legislation, which requires compression, which means that our rate has been reduced. And you'll see in 2025, our property tax, our maintenance and operations tax slightly increased, but that's direct, that's a direct effect of the disaster pennies that were for one year only. So this year, that will be different.
And from Burl, we won't get, won't go to 26, that'll go to 25?
Burl will be for 2026, we have the tornado for 2025.
Tamika, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not eligible for as many pennies for Burl as we were for the tornado, is that correct?
That is correct. So for this current year, thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Lopez, we had 7.51 disaster pennies that allowed us to generate about $12 million in our current year's budget. However, because of tax rate compression, we are no longer eligible for those same 7.51 pennies. In fact, it looks like we're only eligible for about three disaster pennies, and this, that 8.8323 that you see there for the proposed or projected maintenance and operations tax rate does include those three pennies. So when we were working on the 25-26 year budget considerations, we took into consideration those three pennies that we could be eligible for, based on current law. You're welcome. Also, when we look at budget considerations, you heard me mention earlier, enrollment, so you know that last month I shared that we had a demographer to give us a really good comprehensive report on where we are as a district, and through that evaluation, we learned that we have some smaller cohorts entering our system because birth rates have decreased, and so if fewer students are born five years ago or four years ago, that means that coming into our system, there are going to be a smaller cohort of students. So we have to take that into consideration, and through our efforts on trying to right-size our staffing, we are proposing to generate about $20 million in savings through using attrition, of course, for the 25-26 school year. And also, we are forecasting that we have some other operational adjustments, property insurance changes, things of that nature, that we're, we're planning to capitalize on those savings of nearly $3 million. But this budget does not include a salary increase at this time, so I wanted to make sure I stated that, so that you would know that what we're going to present or what I'm sharing with you this eve, this evening does not have a salary increase in it at this Here, I just want to highlight some other underfunded programs that we know are extremely important and vital to the work that we do day in and day out, but these programs come at a significant cost. And so I'm just going to highlight a few of them, or I'm going to state a few of them. There, for mentioned there, there are multiple programs that we are supporting that we get state funding for, and we do appreciate that state funding. But if you look at special ed specifically, the state gives us, and I'm looking at the left side of the, the screen right now, on your slide deck, the left side where it says the 23-24 school year, you'll see that we were allocated about $44.7 million for special education. But look at what we're spending, we're spending over $80 million on that program. Similarly, if you look at school safety, and we know that the laws have changed as it relates to school safety and the requirements that we have to put in place, again, we're already spending over $7.3 million in the 23-24 school year. In 24-25, we had some grants in our current year to help offset some of the costs, so don't think that those costs went down, it's just that we were able to repurpose some of those allowable activities to other funding sources, so that we could have some savings in the general fund, because right now, this presentation is about the general fund budget only. But you'll see there how much the state has allotted for some of the things that they've mandated from a safety perspective, but yet what we know is important, we have to make sure we have dollars to support that, and so we've made an intentional effort to make sure we're, we are doing what we are supposed to do in that regard. But you'll see that that comes at a cost. And then finally, I'll just highlight transportation. We know that getting our students to school is important, it's an important part of what we do. And so while we are only allotted about, you know, $3 million, we're spending upwards of $20 million in one year, and this past year, about 17, just over 17 million is what we're budgeted to spend, but the 24-25 school year is just now wrapping up. So these are not final expenditures for 24-25, that is merely the budget. So you'll see here that 63.5 million in 23-24, which were actual expenditures, and the projected 64.2 million, those are real deficits, and I will tell you, no legislative funding model has projected to give us that much money. So that gap is not going to be filled. So anything that they give us this session, we're going to be thankful for, but it's going to mitigate and reduce the current deficits that we are already facing.
And just so everybody is aware, these are unfunded mandates by the state.
So school safety is an underfunded mandate. Transportation, some of that is local decision-making, we decide that we want to transport our students because we know it's important to get our students to school, and then there's a mile radius, right, that by law, things that we have to do. So I want to be clear that some of these are, we're required to provide special education programs to our students, but underfunded, safety is definitely leading the way. Now, I know this is what we've been wanting to see, so I want to kind of tee us up here and talk about what we're seeing here on the screen as it relates to the, the budget draft that is before you. So you'll see on the left side, you'll have the different funding sources and expenditures, and you'll see for our current year's budget, 24-25, you'll see in the light blue area, total revenue. You see that $534,717,728, that's our current budget, and then you'll see total expenditures, $543,425,063, with a deficit of just over $8.7 million. That is our current budget as of today for 24-25. We are approaching the last month of this fiscal year, remember, we changed our fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th, and so we have some cost avoidance and mitigation strategies in place right now to close out the year. The goal is not to have that deficit exist, so the goal is to, for that eight, seven, 8.7 million to be as less than that as possible. So we're almost there with closing out the year, and we'll be reporting on that soon. But for tonight's conversation, the 25-26 school year is where I want us to really zoom in, because you'll see the major differences in our revenue projections. And I'm going to start with the federal revenue, I'm going to skip down to federal, because as you know, there were some changes to the SARS program, Student Health and Related Services, and those challenge, those reductions in available revenue are impacting us in a, in a very significant way, because we are still providing the services. But the amount of revenue that we're now not able to capitalize on or generate is impacting us significantly, even though we have not changed our program model, because we know that we still need to provide those services to students. So you'll see a decrease in federal revenue. Also, you'll see some changes in local revenue. Again, remember, we won't have as many disaster pennies available to us, so we're going to generate less. And then state revenue is down a little bit as well, again, enrollment is down a little bit, we're forecasting fewer students. When we go down to the expenditure side, you'll see that we've used attrition in the past, we're going to do the same thing again this year, 20 million is what our projected attrition number is, and then at the bottom line, you'll see 29.6 million. That is what our projected deficit is if we did nothing else as of today. And so anytime you have a deficit when you are working through a budget, as you know, the board is required to approve and adopt three budgets by July 1st. The general fund, which is what we're talking about now, child nutrition, which is federally-funded, and debt services. So you can't adopt a negative budget, so you have to balance that budget, so we would have to use our fund balance or reserves, some like to call it a savings account, I don't like to think of it as a savings account, because I just don't like to sit, think of it that way, but it is reserve funding that we could access, that we have available to be able to fill that deficit. But over these next several weeks, our goal, of course, is to get that 29.6 down as much as we can, but I will tell you that our operational budgets are lean. There are just things that you saw what we're spending on transportation, you see what we have to spend on special education, you see, we have audits, we have Harris County Appraisal District, everybody has requirements that we have to adhere to, and we're not being given significant or the level of funding that is necessary to take care of our immediate needs. And so we're having to prioritize in a major way because of those limitations.
Our transportation have to be that much moving forward?
The biggest part of the transportation expense is fuel, and we don't regulate fuel prices. We know we need to take, get our kids to school. So when we talk about prioritizing transportation, I would imagine that's going to continue to be at the top of the totem pole, because if we don't get the students to school, what happens? That's further enrollment challenges, further staffing challenges.
Well, what I was wondering is, this isn't, you know, buying more buses or things like that?
No, this is not that. This is day-to-day operational expenses, the, I think of it as the cost of doing business.
Right.
You know, if the bus breaks down, it has to be repaired. We need to keep gasoline in it, it needs to meet the safety standards, it needs to have AC to some degree, I'm not going to push it too hard, Troy. But needless to say, it is not an expense as it relates to Mr. Fernandez, as it relates to buying buses, not expanding the fleet there.
Which might have to also happen.
The cost of doing business. You know, one bus goes offline, then yes, do we need, you can never have too many buses, it's been my experience. Yes, ma'am?
I know that we recently were, those funds generated into this.
Yes, and so anytime we have property that is sold, it goes back into our general operating pot under the local revenue line, so you'll see that 184 million for this current school year is what we're projecting to receive locally, that includes any property sales that we have. So any revenue we get from property sales does help to reduce the, the current deficit.
Thank you, just to clarify, so on SARS, just so people that don't know what kind of programming is included in that, could you clarify what that is?
So SARS, the acronym stands for Student Health and Related Services. And so when a student needs a, some support at school, personal care providers, they're called PCPs, there are some counseling expenditures that are, are counseling personnel that are allowable, those are the two that come to mind, I know that there are others, it's just that that's not my, my expertise at the moment, but happy to get you additional information should you need that, but it's services to help support most of our special education students, and so of course, that's our most, one of our most precious groups of students, so we want to make certain that they have what they need to be successful at school, and so that, again, that comes at a price.
Yeah.
Obviously, that falls under the Department of Education. From, from that shutting down, is that where that comes from?
Uh-uh, I think it's totally separate, because the changes that happened with that program stemmed from an audit that took place, oh goodness.
Several years ago.
Several years ago.
You've been dealing with it for a couple of years.
Yes, and it's just now matriculating through the pipeline, down through the system, and so the state had some areas or opportunities for improvement, which means that the, the local LEAs are being asked to make some changes as well. So that was prior to this administration's changes that are underway.
Like this is going to be even lower next year?
Um, I think that what we have here is an accurate projection, it's a solid forecasting on what we believe it to, to be true.
Before we get into what's the legislature?
Yes, that is correct. So now, I want to transition over to the, the legislative update, because I think it's important to highlight some of the changes that are happening. Again, I'm only going to focus on school finance, there are lots of noteworthy bills that we are tracking, but for tonight's conversation, I only want to focus on those that are most impactful to school finance, and this is just a few of them, to say the least. So you know, the last time we had this discussion, there were two versions of school finance legislation being proposed, there was the House version, and there was the Senate version. Last week was a very active week legislatively, and I don't remember sitting in so many school finance meetings in a long time, but needless to say, we were happy to see that they had come to some sort of agreement before the end of the session. And so now we're waiting on the third reading of HB2, the Senate's version of House Bill 2, and once it goes through that third reading, then it will go on to the, the governor's desk. Since that time on Sunday, actually, we received some revenue models that we're going to have to work through, but again, we're just glad that they've made some sort of decision, if you will, before the end of the session, before going into a special session if that's called. So school districts, I think we're happy to see that. So what's included?
Okay. Originally, they were talking $300 to $500.
Mm-hmm. What do you see now?
Not include public, and the special education programming, there's no difference in that allotment?
So let me walk through these, and then I'll answer any questions that I may have, because I think I'm going to get to some of your questions. So as it relates to the basic allotment, originally, the House verge, the House's version of the basic allotment was a $295 increase, but as you can see here, where they've landed in the middle is a $55 increase to the basic allotment. However, they have created a new allotment called the fixed cost allotment. Since we couldn't get, they could not agree on increasing the basic allotment, they did take into consideration that there are ongoing quote-unquote "fixed" costs that school districts need to be able to receive support for, because when you put, when you increase the basic allotment, of course, under current law, that triggers required compensation increases, and so we were asking for them to make it as flexible as possible for us, because even when you have, outside of compensation increases, there are still other ongoing operating expenses that we need to make sure we're generating dollars for. You'll see here that the fixed cost allotment, also called the ABC allotment, will allow for $106 for each student enrolled. Now, enrolled is significant here, because usually we receive funding based on average daily attendance. This is 106 times each student enrolled. So if you do some quick back-of-the-hand math, 106 times 45,000 kiddos, we're going to generate about $4.5 million, right? But because the bill language has not been finalized, we don't know if it's student, students enrolled as of P EAM snapshot, students enrolled on the, as of the first day of school, like all of those nuances still have to be worked out, that's why we're saying we need to wait until we have a signed bill before we can try to interpret what they want us to do. And so, but that's a good thing for us, because you just, you just saw what it's costing us for transportation alone. So $4.5 million isn't going to cover that deficit, but of course, it's going to help, you know, mitigate that $29.6 million deficit that we currently have. Okay, so we have the basic allotment, only going up by 50, going up $55, a new allotment called the fixed cost allotment, now the teacher retention allotment, a new allotment that requires compensation increases. Again, you'll remember last month, the Senate version wanted to give raises or compensation increases in the way that's here, the other version, House, the House wanted to include the nurses, the counselors, all that group, and we were going to take 75%, 40% out the top, and 75% of the 40%, all that math, all that good math. Well, this is where they've landed as of Sunday. Of course, we are a district with more than 5,000 students, so we would be subject to providing our teachers that have three to four years of experience a $2,500 pay increase, and teachers that have five or more years of experience a $5,500, $5,500 pay increase. So they would be giving us the money for that, but we'd have to pass that directly on in the form of compensation increases. And so they received feedback, they, meaning the legislators, received feedback from superintendents and other school district officials about, well, what about other people in the school system that helped make the system what it is? And so they created a new support staff retention allotment, and again, you have to remember that allotments are created so they can track your spending, to track our spending. So if there is an allotment, usually there's some specific coding that goes with it, so that you can report and share through P EAM's data reporting usually, that you're using those funds in the manner for those items that it was, they are designated for. So now there is a staff retention allotment that can be used, or should be used, for groups such as, and you'll see them listed there, you know, counselors, librarians, nurses, custodians, teaching assistants, you know, school service staff, all the other staff that, except administrative staff, that helps support the school. So then they increased the basic allotment, and set aside $45 per staff member there that fall into that specific group. Now, the question is, or the wondering is, what date are they going to use to determine which employees, like how are you going to determine our employee counts? So again, because we don't have that information yet, any modeling that we're doing, we're using the best estimates that we can possibly use. Just, yes, ma'am?
Good question. What about our teachers, one to two years?
Great question.
Yes, that's something that we're going to have to consider when we start having our budget, is what are we going to do with those teachers?
So by law, they will not be required to receive a compensation increase in this way, but they could, of course, receive a compensation increase if that's what the board and we decide to do as a district. But the law does not cover teachers as currently written and does not cover teachers that are in year zero, one, or two.
They're the ones that need that.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
Their years they're in, other than Merck, been an encouragement, not a discouragement.
So again, you're hearing some of the conversation we're having about what happens when, you know, we have other groups that are just as important that we have to take into consideration, okay? All right, so next I'm going to go to, again, just a reminder that House Bill 2 also has some provisions in it as it relates to uncertified teachers. So there are some waivers, there's a waiver that can be implemented in the '26-'27 school year, but the goal is for school districts to be fully, have fully certified teachers by the '29-'30 school year, okay? So I just said we're starting to pay increases with three years, and we have to have fully certified teachers by the '29-'30 year, okay? Well, vouchers have already crossed the finish line too, so. The special education allotment, and so both the House and Senate versions of this particular bill, they both agreed that the model needs to be, or the allotment needs to be totally revamped, and it's going to be focused on an intensity of service-based model. But one of the key changes that has come into this particular bill is that any changes that will be made will not take place until the '26-'27 school year. So that's the second half of the biennium. And so we wouldn't quote-unquote "generate" any additional funding for providing an intensity of service-based model when they spell out the rulemaking, whatever that's going to look like, that this wouldn't be of an effect for this upcoming school year. It would not be until the '26-'27 school year. However, we would be eligible for reimbursement for every special education evaluation that's done at $1,000 per evaluation, and that would be effective for the '25-'26 school year.
Is that number supposed to be?
Overall, overall, so that amount, I don't think that's changed. I don't think it's changed. I think they've just delayed implementation. And then the teacher incentive allotment, you heard me mention earlier that we set aside about $1 million for that because the state is going to give us that money to pass on to our teachers that meet the criteria, when they receive those certain designations. And we have a specific criteria in place that defines, you know, what those teachers would be eligible for through the teacher incentive allotment. But there are some changes that are taking place in it that they were proposing, and those won't take place until the '26-'27 school year as well. And then?
Enhance me.
Sure. So enhanced means that there are certain school systems that if your teaching population, if most of them, I think they describe it as substantial, if a substantial amount of your teaching population meets the designation requirements and you have a principal evaluation program, a robust principal evaluation program, you could be considered in the enhanced TIA program. That's what it's being defined as, Mr. Marshall. You're welcome. And then, of course, we've talked about school safety before, and this is actually Senate Bill 260. It did have a counterpart on the House side, but this bill has, will also generate additional dollars for us, still underfunded, but of course, it's an increase from what we have currently coming in in the form of an allotment as it relates to school safety. And then as I close out key legislation here, just a few reminders, other bills that we are continuing to watch. We know that the voucher legislation has already been signed by the governor. You'll see here HB2, which is the school finance bill, you see it made it through the Second Chamber on May 23rd. We're waiting on that third reading, and then it'll go to the governor's desk. Other property tax relief legislation, the increasing the business personal property taxes, you know, that was, I'm sorry, yeah, personal property exemption was only $2,500, and now that's $25,000. And so that was sent to the governor already. And then you'll see here the homestead exemption increase, it is currently $100,000. It's being increased to $140,000. So that, again, we're generating fewer dollars. And then SB23, which is tax relief for individuals that are 65 and over or disabled. So again, those bills have gone through both chambers, and we anticipate that they'll be on the governor's desk shortly, and they impact school finances. Now, as we think about our next steps, so we have our revenue impact models that we are currently running, well, I should say, the revenue impact models came out on Sunday, and what we are doing now is taking those models and seeing if we were to apply what they're projecting to give us in comparison to the bill language, what would that mean for Pasadena ISD specifically? And so some of the bill's language, you know, is still vague, and we're waiting on clarity before we really have an idea of what this is going to look like. But not only clarity, but we need the bill to be signed before we, you know, know what we really need to do. So those, but the revenue models, some did come out on Sunday. I've already said that the session is scheduled to end on June 2nd, so we're going to continue to monitor that. We will need to have another budget workshop because what I'd like to bring forward is if the bill passes here soon and we have something signed, it's going to be a race to get everything modeled out so we'll know what we need to provide from a required compensation standpoint in comparison to what are we going to decide to do for those things that are not required. So I'll need to bring all of that information back based on the language of the bill. And as you know, we are required to have our budget in place adopted before July 1st, and so I know we will have to have Dr. Lopez another conversation before the 24th, just to talk about budget as we are right now.
I agree.
Okay. Questions?
You did a great job explaining it to us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Can I borrow some of your money?
Don't have that much.
You know, it's got to be the hardest thing to do to something like this budget together with no rulebook. Good job with what we have, and look to the future, but here we are.
Here we are, yeah. And I would be remiss, again, if I didn't mention the people that support me, a few of them, my three little, I call them my budget queens, Jennifer, Val, and Beth. Like, they are the ladies that are really behind the scene, and some other finance members, but I'm making eye contact with them because I needed them to give me feedback after the presentation, so they need to be listening.
It's been two years you've had to do this.
That they have.
You know you're not getting revenue to somebody who does some, so it's always a what-if for the last two years.
Sure.
At least we got something started.
We have something started that sounds really promising. But again, I just want to reiterate, the models that I have seen does not erase $29.6 million. It will not do it. So there will be some degree of a deficit, but we're hoping to minimize that, even taking into consideration the requirements that will be underway.
I'm pretty deserviced, we'll be joining about 1,000-something other students.
More than, yes, and that's all of us in Texas, because it's like 1,100 school districts, so you're right.
Thank you for your hard work. We do appreciate it. We know you guys are working day and night, so we do appreciate it. And Kenny's got all the money, so if you need any money, go to Kenny.
Oh, he's the person I need to talk to. Got it. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. That takes us to the adjournment to close session pursuant to Texas government's codes 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. We will reconvene and open session at 7:00 PM. We're going to reconvene and open session at 7:03 PM. Welcome, everybody. This takes us to special recognition.
So board members, tonight, we have with us career and technical education students advancing to national competition. Tanya Hagar, who is our executive director of CTE, will recognize these outstanding students who have advanced to national competition in career and technical education student organizations. So Tanya, take it away, we're so excited.
Thank you, we are as well. Well, good evening, board members, and Dr. Lopez. It is an honor to be here to recognize individuals who, under the guidance of their dedicated advisors, have excelled and represented their schools and our district in a number of national career and technical education competitions. As you know, CTE student organizations are an essential part of the educational process. They are an extension of the classroom, and they allow students to build leadership skills and network with professionals in business and industry. This year, we had 35 of our CTE students advance to a national competition, many of whom are with us here tonight, even though many of them have already graduated from high school, so we're very honored that they took the time to come out to be recognized this evening. The first student I would like to recognize is Nicholas Rex from Pasadena High School, where he placed third in the nation, third in the nation in fundamental spreadsheet. So a huge congratulations to Nicholas, as well as his advisors, Russell Kent and Teresa Jones. Next, I would like to recognize the archery team from Pasadena Memorial High School. These students advanced to compete in Salt Lake City, Utah, at the National Archery in the Schools Western Finals. This talented group continued the winning tradition of this very successful program. They are quite a dynasty. This is the sixth year in a row that this team, these students, have advanced to nationals. Last year, or I'm sorry, this year, they actually broke a record, they broke their own record, by finishing fifth in the nation in Bullseye and ninth in the nation in 3D. So the team consists of Veronica Perones, Leslie Braden, Seuri Guadarama, Crystal Guzman, Tyler Lucas, Francisco Mahomar, Aiden Moes, Larissa Moreno, Genesis Navarro, Jessica Navarro, Anthony Nguyen, Sodana Own, Sodanin Own, Lena Parada, Jacob Resendez, Alejandro Serrano, Ethan Tyro, Mariana Villalobos, Vivian Wu, and Jawan Zamora. Their advisors are Ms. Lori Obin and Mr. Sonny Mills. Congratulations, archery team from Memorial High School. For the eighth time, we had an opportunity to send some of our outstanding welding students to compete against industry professionals at the National Craft Championships that were held in Nevada the last week of February. In typical fashion, our Pasadena ISD students outperformed many of the top welders who are currently working in the industry. So congratulations to Axel Juarez from Pasadena Memorial High School. His proud teacher is Mr. Andrew Tugwell. And from the Lewis Career and Technical High School, a big congratulations to Louis Mercado, Giovanni Perez, and Eliazar Serrato. And as Eliazar's going and shaking hands, I want to point out that Eliazar placed third overall in structural welding against people currently working in the industry. Their proud teacher is Mr. Brian Suarez. Oh, nope, thank you. I'm falling down on my job here, sorry about that. Two campuses had future educators advance to national competition, which will be held in Orlando, Florida at the end of June. So with us here this evening, we have from the Lewis Career and Technical High School, Allison Carcamo, who advanced in the interactive bulletin board competition. We also have Maylin Diaz, who advanced in interactive bulletin board. And Marissa Vasquez, again, interactive bulletin board. Their proud advisor here tonight is Ms. Danette Thomas. Congratulations to these future educators. We know it takes dedication on the part of the entire family to help these students excel and compete at such a high level, so will the family members of these national qualifiers please stand to be recognized at this time? Congratulations. I would also like to thank our high school principals, our CTE assistant principals for their commitment and continued support of career and technical education programs. And everyone, let's give these students another round of applause. Students and parents, feel free to make your way to the lobby for pictures. And board members and Dr. Lopez, again, thank you so much for your support, and none of this would be possible without you, so thank you for that.
Thank you for a job very well done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good job, good job. I also love this place. Proud of y'all.
Parents of those students, if you want to go to the four-year, you're more than welcome to do so now, if you're one of the parents for those students.
We're going to take pictures and stuff out there if y'all want to cut out. Y'all don't want to stick around for the boring part of this meeting?
We do have a couple of more special recognitions. First, board members, I want you to know on December 9th, 2024, our district proudly hosted its inaugural Spanish Spelling Bee. Students from grades three through six participated, making this event a milestone for our entire community. We successfully advanced four of our students to represent Pasadena ISD at the district level competition held at Region Four in February. We are overjoyed to announce that our very own Rogelio Lopez, very nice last name, I'm not related, but nice last name, a student from Marshall Kendrick Middle School emerged as the overall champion for the entire Region Four meet. Our multilingual director, Dr. Rolando Murchán, will now provide further insights and details about the Spanish Spelling Bee. further insights and details about the Spanish Spelling Bee. Rolando, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there he is. All right. I knew you would be excited about this one, and I'm excited, too.
Yes, it's very exciting. Thank you, Dr. Lopez, and the school board for your unwavering support. We are thrilled to celebrate Rogelio Lopez's exceptional victory at the first-ever Region Four Spanish Spelling Bee. Rogelio is representing Marshall Kendrick Middle School, showcased his remarkable skills and determination competing against 12 outstanding students from 10 different school districts across grades six through eight. His extraordinary dedication and passion for the Spanish language earned him a well-deserved first-place finish at Region Four. This impressive accomplishment has also granted Rogelio the honor of representing our district at the state-level competition. He has been invited to participate in the Texas Spanish Spelling Bee, taking place on June 18th and 19th in El Paso. We are incredibly proud of him, excited to cheer him on as he continues to shine and showcase the beauty and richness of the Spanish language. We would also like to express our heartfelt gratitude to Ms. Anna Karen Bento, Rogelio's spelling bee coach. Her unwavering support, expert guidance, and commitment have been instrumental in this success. Additionally, we extend our sincere thanks to Rogelio's parents, who are here too, Ms. Irma and Rogelio Lopez, for their steadfast encouragement and support in her education. Rogelio, congratulations. Ms. Bento, Mr. and Mrs. Lopez, we are confident that Rogelio will continue to excel at the state competition this summer, and we eagerly look forward to celebrating more of his achievements. Let's applaud his amazing milestone together.
I bet he comes back as a state champion. So, board members, our next special recognition is McMasters Elementary has consistently demonstrated a commitment to excellence in teaching and learning, and their hard work has not gone unnoticed. This year, McMasters was awarded the prestigious Gold Ribbon Award by Children at Risk, which is a testament of their commitment to meeting high expectations for all students. This is an award that is not easy to achieve, and McMasters ranked number one in the Houston area among all elementary schools. I would like to ask Diana Del Pelear from Children at Risk to come forward and recognize McMasters Elementary for this outstanding accomplishment. Here she is.
Well, the applause goes right back to McMasters.
Good evening, Superintendent Lopez and members of the board. It is my pleasure to be here on behalf of Children at Risk as the chief of school performance. With over 30 years of experience in education, I can attest to the hard work and commitment that it takes to... Not only is she grown from an educator to an education leader, she is an exceptional leader here within the state of Texas. Please allow me to contextualize being number one for you. Children at Risk, for the last 20 years, has led the way in ensuring communities, parents, education decision-makers have transparency and data to drive decisions, because we have the right to be informed of how schools are producing results in every school. And if you can have excellence in one school that's highly populated with economically disadvantaged students, and you take the time to investigate what they're doing there that's different, then you can do it at every school. Because if one school can do it, every school can do it, it's finding the secret sauce, right? So, I intend to come back, right, and get in that campus and find out what that campus is doing, because it is a model in your district, a model of excellence where over 88% of the students are economically disadvantaged, over 90% of the students look like me, potentially born out of the country like me, and face many obstacles and barriers that privileged students do not experience. And if you can do it in a campus like that, then you can do it at every campus, right? Because if you can do it with the students that are typically underserved, that you have to give more resources to dedicate more time to, teach in two languages to, and make sure they're learning and mastering in a second language, or outside the way a typical student learns, and you do it for every kid, regardless of their background and the way they show up for school, we can do it at every campus. So, I recognize this school for being number one. Number one, because they have outstanding student performance on STAR, outstanding individual student growth year over year, and when you compare them, you take them out of the pool and you compare them with schools with similar demographics, out of the 90 Gold Ribbon schools, meaning they made the cut, an A or a B in school performance and school growth, right, and comparable performance. When you take all of the schools in out of Texas, there were 4,399 that were ranked, 90 in the Houston area, 90 in the Houston area made the Gold Ribbon Cut. McMasters is number one. Number one. They are the pride of Houston among all elementary schools. And I'll conclude with this point. For this team, there were 4,399 elementary schools ranked in the entire state of Texas. McMasters is in the top 5% of the entire state, ranking 232 of all 4,399 schools in the top 5%. Congratulations to Principal Giger and her team. And on behalf of Children at Risk, we have a small certificate for you.
Well deserved. If you've ever been at that campus, you can see why they're number one. We got more things to brag about. Here's one of our last ones this time. We're going to spread them out all throughout the summer, board members, because we have so much to brag on. So, it is with great pride that we recognize tonight Thompson Intermediate for its outstanding achievement of being designated as a Schools to Watch. This prestigious honor reflects the school's commitment to academic excellence, responsive leadership, and a nurturing environment that supports the whole child. Teachers set high expectations, and students rise to meet them. They don't just teach, they listen. Teams work together, decisions are made thoughtfully, and systems are in place to make sure everyone has what they need to thrive. It is like a well-tuned orchestra. Thompson joins a distinguished group of campuses across the state and the nation that exemplify best practices in the middle-level education at Thompson Intermediate. We celebrate this milestone as a testament to the dedication of its students, its staff, and its leadership team. So, thank you for being a model Schools to Watch. Earlier this year, Letty Menchaca, Associate Director of Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, Middle Level Services, presented the award to the entire student body at a pep rally celebrating their accomplishment. But I would like to take this evening to recognize Thompson Intermediate as a Schools to Watch. Thompson.
Takes us to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel section.
President, I move that we approve addenda items A through... Sorry, I missed that part. Aye?
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Gonzalez.
So, I'd like to welcome Ms. Emily Terrado. All right. So, Ms. Emily, yes. Ms. Emily Terrado has been approved for the position of counselor at Pasadena Memorial High School. Congratulations. Any family or friends here today with you? Congratulations. Ms. Jessica... Ms. Jessica Jefferson has been approved, there you go, for the position of licensed specialist in school psychology for the special education department. Do you have any family or friends with you? That's awesome. Congratulations. And welcome to Pasadena ISD, and I hope that we gave you a warm welcome. So, Ivy Johnson. Oh, I'm so sorry. I did mark this one. Ivy Johnson has been approved for the licensed specialist in school psychology position, not here today, but when you see her, please make sure you congratulate her and give her a warm Pasadena ISD welcome. Um, Jod Khan. Mr. Khan has been approved for the position of diagnostician for the special education department. Do you have any family or friends?
The smart man right there.
Herr Wallace has been approved, yes, has been approved for the position of diagnostician in the special education department. Do you have any family or friends here today? Great. Congratulations. We're happy to have you. And for you, it's a welcome back to Pasadena. So, glad to have you back. All right. Mr. Lamont Mayberry, there you are. Mr. Mayberry has been approved for the position of athletic coordinator at Southeastern High School. Congratulations. Do you have any family, friends, Trojans here to introduce us? Congratulations.
Andrea Winkie was here, even though she's no longer, she's retired, and she showed up.
Oh, there she is.
Awesome. Good job. Well, congratulations, everyone.
Mr. Diego Gutierrez for... Oh, that's where it's happening. Oh, lots of excitement. Mr. Gutierrez has been approved for the position of assistant principal at Queens Intermediate School. Do you have any family or friends here? Congratulations. Mr. Xavier Ladd has been approved for the position of principal at Gardens Elementary School. Congratulations. Do you have any family and friends here? And Ms. Melissa Garza. Garza has been approved for the position of principal at Jackson Intermediate School.
Well, congratulations to you all on behalf of the board. We are super excited for each and every one of you in your new positions. At this time, you're more than welcome to stick around, but you don't have to. You can sneak out. We'll give you a couple of minutes. I know. I wanted to say that. I want to tell, I want to tell Dr. McCain, hey, your friend died.
When I heard that, I was so proud, man. No, thank you, man. Keep doing what you do. You are awesome.
Congratulations. So proud of you. Great job.
It's okay. No, absolutely.
To our friends and family in the lobby, there's chairs in the boardroom now. Consideration possible approval of the reorganization of the superintendent's cabinet, which includes a new chief of staff position and the renaming of deputy superintendent of staff and academic achievement. Motion by Ms. Davila, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval... Did you need to say something? Okay. Consideration possible approval of CSP number 24P-025LP, contract renewal year two of five with Gallagher Benefit Services for the employee benefits and insurance consulting services. Go ahead, Ms. Lopez. Hang on a second. Did you need to say something?
Yeah, I was just saying that Derek Echo from Echo, sorry, from Gallagher is here this evening, I believe. Maybe he's trying to make his way in right now. There he is right there. So, he's here this evening.
So, that was a motion by Ms. Sullivan, yes, and second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? So that was a motion by Ms. Sullivan, yes, and second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Mr. Echo's here, if y'all want to question him, he's here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of award, of the award for 25P-027LP, self-funded health plan pharmacy benefit management services, stop-loss coverage, and employee assistant program, EAP, for a cost of $1,001,000,000. Well done, ladies. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
The Olympiad was such a success. If you keep doing this and we keep having all these kids participate, we may want to check with the NRG. Wonderful.
Any other discussion? Outstanding. Consideration possible approval of an affiliation agreement between University of Houston Graduate College of Social Work and Pasadena Independent School District to facilitate the placement of social work interns at designated high-needs campuses.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Davila. Second by Ms. Gonzalez.
Sullivan.
Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of general waivers from the Texas Virtual Schools Network, course review process for passing of virtual school courses. Motion by Ms. Davila.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a subscription renewal for Bryant, sorry, Brain Pop from August 31st, 2025 to August 30th, 2026, in the amount of $144,859. Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the optional flexible school day program, OFSDP, for Tegler Community School. By Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez.
Can I say that Ms. Capra is here and she would, wants to share just a couple of the numbers that she has for community school, so not a big presentation, just sharing some numbers. If you'll go to the microphone for us, Ms. Capra.
Either one. Proximity microphones, you're going to speak into them.
I just wanted to share that because of the options that are allowed to have under the optional flexible school day to provide variations of educational days for the students, this year we have graduated 156 students through that program, with an additional 15 scheduled to be graduating through it at the end of summer school.
Awesome.
For a total of, I believe the number was 3,120 since the program began.
Awesome, changing kids' lives, love it.
I have a question. Is this on? So is it a normal business night school for summer school as well?
Yes, night school operates from the middle of September until the middle of June, so it goes on a rotating enrollment. So students can start at any time during that point and they can continue all the way through the third week in June.
Okay.
Which is the same time that summer school ends for our campus and the district.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Fantastic.
And it was great seeing those kids graduate. Just, parents are just ecstatic, kids just love it. Your valedictorian was just crying as she was watching her speech. I loved every last bit of it.
It's a special experience in a way that, I'm biased, I believe, is more special than all the other graduations.
Good, it's supposed to be.
Yes, especially those kids who never thought that they would get there. You know, when a goal seems harder to attain, it means that much more.
Correct.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Thank you. Consideration possible approval of an inter-local agreement between Pasadena Independent School District and...
We needed a vote on that?
Ah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm just trying to get you all out of here. Joe's been waiting. Consideration possible approval of inter-local agreement between Pasadena Independent School District and Emerson College for internship and externship with no financial implications. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
It's one at this time. Yes. We would be open to, I feel like, any amount that we could get for speech of pathologists because that's such a shortage right now, but we have one at this time.
Got to go to the microphone.
Sorry, Jessica, got to go to the microphone.
We do have one at this time. We are open to taking more. It depends on the students who were enrolled in the university at the time, and how many of them need to do their externship. So they do adults and pediatrics, and so the school district serves for that pediatric role.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I get carried away. Consideration possible approval for the Pasadena High School orchestra and choir students to travel to Orlando, Florida to perform in Disney's Your Instrumental Workshop from Saturday, February the 28th, 2026 through Tuesday, March the 3rd, 2026. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the Southeastern High School Janet's Dance Team to travel to Orlando, Florida to participate in the Texas Parade of Champions performance March 4th through the 8th, 2026. Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for a Doby High School student and teacher to travel to Washington DC on June 10th through the 11th, 2025, to attend the Congressional Institute's Art Awards reception. Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to student achievements, which is for information only, which brings us to our financial section. Consideration possible approval of a budget amendment for April, April 2025. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of award, of an award for CSP number 25P-028LP, property boiler and machinery equipment breakdown, cyber liability and crisis management insurance in the amount not to exceed $10,731,269. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of renewal for automotive inland marine flood musical instruments, vocational interns, accident, crime, general liability, educator's liability, surety bonds, law enforcement liability, and storage tank insurance programs for the 2025-2026 in an amount not to exceed $1,572,070. Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I believe it was under general liability. I know Tamika was finding that question ask for us. We have here with us tonight Ms. Alford, Dr. Alfred Stevens and her Joe Blazi from McGriff and Roger Montemayor from Gallagher, so.
It's actually under our educator's liability insurance, to answer your question, so you're good. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the operations section. Houston-Galveston Area Council Clean Vehicle Program contract for extensions to the start of the required performance monitoring period is for information only. Consideration possible approval of an annual professional service consulting agreement with Runoff Management Group, Inc., in the amount of $53,190. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing MEP Commissioning Service Agreement with Coastal Commissioning Group, LLC, for the 2022 Bond New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $61,750. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I believe we do, is that correct, Kevin?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a construction contract with ERC Environmental and Construction Service.
So we will check that and let you know, but as students request, and we don't have enough space for them, we do look for ways to get them in.
Mr. Richards, did you have something you wanted to say? He looked like he was going to say... Nice.
Kevin, who is ERC? Have we worked with these guys before?
We have not used ERC. Their references checked out really good. They do quite a bit of work for the city of Pasadena. PBK Architects has used them on quite a few projects, so we're looking forward to having another good contractor.
Okay, but they're local.
They are.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number 023, for the 2022 Bond CTE Classroom and Lab Improvements Project at Sam Rayburn High School in the credit amount of $11,015. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number 024, for the 2022 Bond CTE Classroom and Lab Improvement Project at Sam Rayburn High School in the amount of $33,964.98. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 19 for the 2022 Bond New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project in the credit amount of $13,642. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 05 for the 2022 Bond New Jessup Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $55,600. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 06 for the 2022 Bond New Jessup Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $20,430. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 07 for the 2022 Bond New Jessup Elementary School Replacement Project in the credit amount of $49,644. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number A-052 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the credit amount of $29,72.
Remove.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 08 for the 2022 Bond New Jessup Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a non-professional services contract between Pasadena ISD and the City of Pasadena for Police Cadet Transportation Services on June 9th, 2025.
Remove.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the Construction Update for information only, which takes us to the Miscellaneous Section. Presented by, it's our District-wide Intruder Detection Audit Findings, which is also for information only.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pasadena ISD Board President has issued a certificate of election and/or appointment for positions 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7. Mr. David Hodgins and Ms. Joan Jordan will be assisting in this event's ceremony by administering each of the oath of offices by completing all necessary paperwork. At this time, will the board member-elect for position 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7 step forward to the front of the board table. As these board members take their place, Mr. Hodgins will deliver the certificate of Thank you. I've provided the certificate of election and will, and ready to conduct the swearing-in ceremony along with Mrs. Jordan, who will serve as our notary tonight, and will provide you all the written oaths, which will actually complete the final ceremony of your swearing-in for this evening. So, Mr. President, Vice President, if you'll just announce the qualifications, we'll proceed with swearing-in. Yeah, Mr. Hodgins and Ms. Jordan, I declare that each board member-elect and appointee is qualified for offices as follows. Position number 7, Joe Campos. Position number 1, Paola Gonzalez. Position number 2, Crystal Davila. Position number 4, Casey Phelan. Position number 3, Nelda Sullivan. You may now proceed to conduct the swearing-in ceremony and administer the written oath of office. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and we'll begin tonight with our newest member. Mr. Campos, if you'll stand over here, please, in front of your family and friends, if you'll turn to me and you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Joe Campos.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
...of School Board Trustee...
Of School Board Trustee.
...for the Pasadena Independent School District...
For the Pasadena Independent.
...of the state of Texas...
State of Texas.
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...preserve...
Preserve.
...protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution...
Defend the Constitution.
...and the laws of the United States...
The laws of the United States.
...and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. Welcome to the board.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I do, thank you, guys, and guys, thank you all for staying. I know you guys could have left early when everybody else did and y'all stuck around. Thank you. Want to introduce everybody to my lovely wife, Amy. She's been with the district 25 years. I know it doesn't look like it, but she's a big part of why I'm here today. My daughter Kylie, my daughter Katie, Katie's boyfriend Edgar, my daughter Kara, her girlfriend Sam, my sister Dorenda, who's also with the district, and I'm not sure how long you've been with the district, sis, but we appreciate you. My mother and my father, Clara and Joe Campos. Ms. Gonzalez, if you'd join me. We'll commence with your swearing-in now, and you've already got your hand raised. Fabulous. Please repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully execute...
Faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
...of School Board Trustee...
School Board Trustee.
...for the Pasadena Independent School District...
For the Pasadena Independent.
...of the state of Texas...
State of Texas.
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...preserve...
Preserve.
...protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution...
Defend the Constitution.
...and the laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States.
...and of this state. So help me God. Welcome back to the board.
Thank you.
Would you like to just say a quick word?
I would like to say thank you to my fellow board members for their support through this time and through just life in general, and to Anthony, who's back there, my best friend and biggest supporter, and my children, who could not be here tonight, but they will be watching this. I love you guys and you guys are amazing.
Thank you, trustee. Just Davila, if you'd join us. And raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I...
I, Crystal Davila.
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully execute...
Faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office...
Do solemnly swear.
...of School Board Trustee...
School Board Trustee.
...for the Pasadena Independent School District...
For the Pasadena Independent.
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...preserve...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution...
Defend the Constitution.
...and the laws of the United States...
The laws of the United States.
...and of this state. So help me God. Welcome back to the board.
Oh, I first want to appreciate my family, my husband. I grew up here in Pasadena, so I'm really excited to serve. And now as a school board member, I have my nephew, my niece, right here is very special, my siblings, my parents, and hopefully one day I will also have a daughter coming to Pasadena ISD, as you can see. And lastly, I want to thank the school board because I think we have something very special going on, and I really appreciate everyone's support during this time when we ran for school board again, and I look forward to working with all of you for four years, including
And your hands are already up as well, excellent.
Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...or affirm...
Or affirm.
...that I will faithfully execute...
Faithfully execute.
...the duties...
The duties.
...of the office...
The office.
...of School Board Trustee...
School Board Trustee.
...for the Pasadena Independent School District...
Pasadena Independent School District.
...and will to the best of my ability...
Will to the best of my ability.
...preserve...
Preserve.
...protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution...
The Constitution.
...and the laws of the United States...
The laws of the United States.
...and of this state.
This state.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Welcome back to the board.
First, I'd like, I get a chance to brag about my wife and my mother-in-law and her friend and my twin brothers here, which is a first, and his wife, Dawn. I told them I had to pick you out in a crowd, it was hard because nobody, I just told them to look for the ugly twin, so there you are. So, but I would really like to thank everybody. The past four years have been amazing. We've done some amazing things and we're excited about what's next. I can't wait to work with another Eagle on the board. This is going to be fun.
Here we go.
And it's going to be a ride and I'm looking forward to it, so thank you all very much.
And now trustee Sullivan. It is my incredible honor and privilege to swear you in as our most tendered and blessed trustee, so would you please raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Ruth Sullivan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully...
Faithfully.
...execute the duties...
Execute the duties.
...of the office of...
Of the office of.
...School Board Trustee...
School Board Trustee.
...for the Pasadena Independent School District...
For the Pasadena Independent.
...of the state of Texas...
State of Texas.
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...preserve...
Preserve.
...protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
...and the laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States.
...and of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
Help me God.
God bless you and welcome back.
I want to thank all of you. I have my son Johnny here tonight. My family's been extremely supportive. It has been my pleasure to serve on the board for 32 years, and I owe it all of you to see that I was reelected this time. I appreciate so much my fellow board members. It's been such a pleasure to work with them and to see all the things that we, as a unified board, have been able to do for our district with your help and your support. And we're going to continue to do all the great things in Pasadena for our kids. That's the name of the whole game, doing what's best for kids. And I think you saw tonight just a very slimmer of the accomplishments that our students are able to accomplish when we provide the services and the programs and the instruction for them to be successful. And that's owed to all of you who have supported us through bond elections, through different activities within our district. We have Dr. Powell here. It's been such an honor to work with her. And we have Dr. Lopez now. We're looking to a bright future and to continue to accomplish great things for our district with your help.
Mr. Vice President, the oaths of office for the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees positions 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7 have been administered to the candidates, and each is ready to assume and continue the duties or the responsibilities of their offices. Back to you, sir. All right, thank you, Mr. Hodgins and Ms. Jordan. Paola, Crystal, Nelda, Casey, Joe, congratulations to each of you on your reelection and appointment to the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees. Each of you may now, I guess, take a picture because you're supposed to be taking a seat. So, Casey, the president has gone off script just a second. Okay, okay, okay. Congratulations, congratulations. Come take your seat, guys. Come take your seat. It's time to assume the duties and responsibilities as members of the board. As you are making your way back to the table, I want to take one last opportunity to thank you for your dedication and service to this district. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, and we reconvene pretty quickly, so if you want to hang out for just a few ...of the board officers and the committees. We'll handle the committees after. That can be something that's done later. For Board President, do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move to nominate Kenny Fernandez as Board President.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion for Vice President?
I move that we make you Mr. Casey Phelan, Vice President.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I hear a motion for Secretary? Motion by Ms. Sullivan for Mr. Kendrick to be our secretary, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? I can't think of a better person to put in that position. He is the, he's the steam behind this engine that keeps us going, so I'm excited. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the Board Officer of Assistant Secretary, do I hear a motion?
I nominate Nelda Sullivan Assistant Secretary.
Mr. Kendrick, motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? I think that's fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been a long two years. I've been fortunate enough to be considered by my peers to be the president for two years. It has had its ups and downs. I had hair...
the president for two years. It has had its ups and downs. I had hair when I started. And in, in all this, a lot of things happened. We, found us a new superintendent. We filled a board position. We accomplished a lot of things, and I'm, I'm proud of the work that we've done. And we, and we lost, of course, Ms. Morgan. I can't wait to see what the next, at least two years are going to look like with, with the team of eight, and I'm excited about it. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Joe, you have anything you want to say? You've been pretty quiet and stoic down there. Smart man.
I'm just, I was told for six months to a year to sit back and just absorb, so that's what I'm doing.
I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying this, but this is the first time in a while that the men have outnumbered the women on the board, so we'll see how this goes.
Public comments, according to BED Local, related to topics not listed on the agenda, there are no public comments, so I will ask to set the date for the next regular board meeting, Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Remove.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Amen.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:20 PM.